Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have a roll call, please?
Megan Benson Merle.
Here.
Michelle Jackson.
Here.
Kate McKinnney.
Here.
Cynthia Vinton.
Present.
Doug Olson.
Here.
Marcia Scherz.
Here.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we're going to item number two this evening. We're doing a discussion and action item. Consider addendum to the 2020-2021 Spooner High School Student Handbook. Dr. Adlin.
So, this is a continuation of our Rails reopening plan work. And what we're asking for tonight is action on an amendment to the Spooner High School Student Handbook that would extend open campus to juniors and as well as seniors as it currently reads. And the rationale behind it really revolves around our ability to keep students socially distanced in the Commons area during lunchtime. So, expanding the open campus just for the year 2020-2021 to juniors helps us to reach that important number of students that take their lunch in the Commons area each day.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve this addendum to the 2020-21 Spooner High School Student Handbook and waive the second reading, please.
I will motion that we accept the addendum and waive the second reading.
And a second?
Second.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that. All right, now we're going to move to the presentation portion of the evening. And item A is the referendum project update. And we have Brad Kunkel from CISA 10 here with Tom Tuig, project architect via satellite, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, basically, it's been kind of a continuation from last month. We've been continuing to have our design meetings, which with Tom presenting here in a little bit, I'll let him follow up with that more, but making some really good progress. CISA has also started having bi-weekly meetings with David and Shannon. A lot of that's coming down to making sure that we're all on the same page for processes once things get up and running, and even more so getting the required information for putting together the bid documents and things like that. So, we'll actually be meeting tomorrow and going over plenty of stuff there. In addition to those meetings, we're going to be having a scope meeting within the next month with principals. And Luke Schultz did a great job, I think, with the district of determining what needs to take place for a lot of these scope items. But as we get really down to the nitty-gritty, need to make sure we have all that information fully in the bid documents, so no issues with change orders down the future. The preliminary sampling that was approved a couple of months ago, that's complete now. It's, I pretty much took samples in the areas that I absolutely knew would be disturbed. We don't have sample results on that yet, but certainly knock on wood, hopefully it's not too bad. The remaining samples will be taken in December once school's out, and we have construction documents available to know exactly what will go and what won't. Another part of the sampling is taking roof core sections. That's going to be scheduled here before the snow flies, so that'll be kind of a one item in between the preliminary sampling and the final sampling that we'll take care of. There'll also be some private locates that we'll do here in the next couple of months before snow flies as well. And then for Jamar, they've pretty much have everything installed, all the components installed. They're going to need about another two weeks to do the final graphics and commissioning on those items, mostly the direct digital controls at the middle school. And then we'll be scheduling a training for the billings and grounds crew with Jamar so they fully understand how to operate that system as well. And we've had some discussion with the district. We always recommend that that's videotaped, and that won't be an issue at all, so if anyone else transitions into a position, at least they'll have that. I know Jamar has a service contract with the district, so it shouldn't be too big of an issue, but either way, we like to have that extra piece there. The soil borings were completed as well. I just received that documentation today. It didn't look like anything too serious, but it was more of a peruse as it was about a half hour before I left to come up here today. Maybe Tom will have more to discuss on that as well, but really looked like it was really sandy soil everywhere with not much moisture, which is definitely a good thing. So, that's largely the updates up until this point. There's still a lot of things going behind the scenes. We're still finalizing the budgeting document. We're looking into contractors. That's another thing we'll be working with the school district to make sure if there's any contractors we don't want to include or we definitely want to include. District always has the final decision on who's going to be invited. But then, what I would like to do is discuss a lot of the bid process, because in a couple of months here, more like four months away, it's going to get really busy for at least one board meeting. So, what we're looking at doing, kind of a step-by-step process, is doing a preliminary walkthrough here in about the next month and a half or so for all the site and roofing work. We're looking at bidding in December and January, but we want to make sure that they can get on site before it snows, just so they have a better idea of what's going on. We're going to be looking at approximately 40 bid packages, so it'll be really 40 different trades. There's some that can double up, especially a lot of larger general contractors. They might take multiple bid packages, say carpentry, masonry, cast-in-place concrete. They'll get to bid on as many as they want, but then we'll obviously vet to make sure that they're qualified to be able to take care of the additional bid packages that they may bid on that we weren't initially intending. We're going to look at getting, we shoot for four contractors per bid package, basically, so it could get a little tricky on some of them, but basically, we're going to go through our rolodex and call everyone we can. We do calls, we do emails. It's a bit of a sales pitch to them to get them interested in the project, but that's what we're going to be looking at there. Bids are going to be due in January, and I'm still working out the tentative schedule for the final, how we're going to work this out. It's going to be a little tricky with Christmas break and then lining it up to your guys' meetings as well. One thing that would be nice to consider, I know so far, we've kind of been doing the COW meetings, is when I come and I kind of present, and then they're approved at the board meetings. Maybe think about if we're going to do that for approving all these bid packages as well. It gets a little tricky. You don't really, you want to definitely award within a month of them submitting their bids. It gets a little tricky for us because we're going to have a minimal, minimum of a week to vet through all those bids. And then, if we have the COW meeting and it winds even perfectly, that's three weeks, so it's just a consideration. David and I have talked about maybe having a special meeting to determine how things line up, but something I would definitely consider. One good thing I did want to mention, too, is with the, with bidding it out at this point, I think it's, you know, getting bids in January is going to be really beneficial for the district. It's, we're seeing a lot of the private projects that they're getting delayed or canceled. Referendums definitely 100% certainty for the most part for contractors to bid on, so not only can they start filling up their schedule early on, it's something that's going to be a guarantee to them, so hopefully we see the bids come in that way. And the last thing I wanted to say is, on the FFNE, that's going to be a little bit different. It's fixtures, furnishings, equipment, desks, tables, that type of thing. That's going to be one where we're going to do an interview process, so we'll invite three to four vendors for that. And basically, they all do state rates, so you're not really saving any money bidding it. We've done that in the past, and it was pretty much a waste of time, honestly, so it's more of a relationship-type thing, what they have to offer, so in the next few months, we'll be doing that as well. But that's going to be one of them that won't be a hard bid. Any questions, comments? All right, well, with that, I guess we'll kick it over to Tom Tohague with SDS for the design presentation.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Can you see me all right? One second. Can you see my screen? Okay, we're ready when you are. All right, can you see, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks for setting this up. Let me join revolting. Last time, we were up at the district was in August, when we took a look at some of the interior finishes. So, I'm going to roll through this packet, and then get some information updates on the plans.
Tom, can we have you stand fast for just a second here? Any way to make that larger?
Oh, that helps a little bit. Oh, yes.
How about that?
Yes. That's better.
Can you bump, can you bump it up anymore? Ah, yes. Very good, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is just the overall schedule, and we're in construction documents that will be completing by the end of October, and then it gets up for approval. And I think Brad probably covered some of these bid dates, but we're looking at issuing it for bidding in November, receiving bids in December, and then starting construction somewhere February, March of next year. So, we are coming up next Tuesday on the 22nd to kind of finalize some of the interior finishes and take a look at another product. So, looking at the site plans, this is the elementary school, the overall site plan, the addition is up in the northwest corner. We had some soil borings taken, indicated on this plan, as I think eight borings done in the proximity of the addition. Along and short of that is that all the soils look good, sand. So, it's got a good bearing capacity, so we're in good shape in that regard. The middle school, the same thing. This is the site plan that we took a look at back in July, that expands that parking up on the north side of the building. And after that gymnasium is torn down, the office is constructed, and then that playground area is moved over to the east side. Same thing over there, we had some borings done, and the conclusion of that is the soil looks good there as well. So, it's a lot of sand, good bearing capacity. Couldn't really get into where the existing gym was, but they did try to get as close as possible, so. Looking at the floor plan for the elementary, everything in the colored is new construction and renovation. We took a look at finishes, which we'll see at the end of this, but one of the things they talked about was going to resilient flooring in the classrooms versus carpeting. The 4K has got individual toilet rooms. Everything indicated in green would be a terrazzo, which is a great product you've got in your existing school. The blue is ceramic tile or quarry tile, which would be in the, excuse me, in the toilet rooms and in the kitchen. The plan hasn't really changed too much since you seen it the last time. We did make a few changes in the office area, creating some study carrels for students within that open office area. The health room with private toilet room, and then another toilet room for the office staff. The seating for the cafeteria, with the table shown here, is about 200. We looked at another seating arrangement, so you could lay it out theater-style seating for 400 seats in that configuration. We did look at finishes in the addition, and as you see this bird's eye view, it would be the terrazzo in the cafeteria. We're looking at resilient flooring in the classrooms, and it would be a field color paint in most of the classrooms, but then we're introducing some accent colors, primary colors in the classroom area. This is a aerial view, looking into that area adjacent to the office and the serving area. We did show corraling doors that would separate that corridor that goes down to the 4K and the serving area for the cafeteria. The middle school, we modified that entrance to utilize that existing entry to the north, and then shifted the office addition a little bit north and west, extended that best to be able to create a secure entry, so that these doors would be locked, and then people would be forced to circulate through the office area. Reception desk with a couple of workstations, principal's office, boardroom, again, nurse's room, private toilets for both the office and the health room, and work break room. This is a bird's eye view, looking at all those finishes inside the office addition. This is that existing north entrance, the photo that's going to be repaid, and that's going to become the office entrance into the school. So, looking at some aerial views of that. We discussed several different products with the staff and administration, and looked at resilient flooring, which is an LVT or linoleum. This is a product that we're going to be talking about next week. I think the preference is for resilient flooring in the classroom area, but this is kind of a vinyl carpeting, which has been used in a lot of healthcare and schools. So, we're going to have a product rep come up and make a demonstration, presentation on that product. So, our interior designers put together a proposed fish plan for the middle school and the elementary school, and this is a combination of carpet tile, carpets, the laminated cabinetry, some examples of terrazzo flooring. This colored elements here are some of that resilient electric vinyl tile or linoleum. And developed some images based on the materials that we had looked at with the staff. This view of the upper left is the cafeteria at the elementary school. It would have the terrazzo flooring, and we've got a pitched ceiling in that area to get a little bit more volume. And what we're proposing is a linear metal ceiling with this, actually, it's got a wood look to it. On the right, this is a typical classroom that would have that resilient flooring and built-in casework along the corridor wall. And then at the bottom, this is the ice, or the elementary office. We just got a walk-off carpet in the front, and then this is that plastic laminate built-in reception area, a view down the corridor at the elementary school. And then this is the middle school office area. So, some images of that. So, I'm going to just quickly run through some of the systems that are being proposed for the elementary school. So, the addition is in that northwest corner. You can see that pitched roof over the cafeteria, and then get a view inside of those spaces. So, the addition is 11,000 square feet. This is our construction documents set here. So, this is a work in drawing here. So, in terms of the systems, this is the plumbing underground. We've got new toilet rooms in the classroom areas, sinks in the classrooms, a lot of plumbing in that serving kitchen that's going in the existing classroom, some plumbing in the office area, and then we're tying back into that system right in the northwest corner of the existing building. Just the overhead piping to all those plumbing systems. This is the DHVAC layout. We're going to have three rooftop units. One would serve the office area, one would serve the classrooms, and then the other unit would serve the cafeteria. We are able to modify the existing system to accommodate that serving kitchen. And then one other area in the elementary school that's going to be modified is that existing office, which is being converted to the music room, but we're able to modify the work in that area. From a lighting standpoint, it's going to have suspended two-by-two acoustical ceilings in the classrooms, offices, and in that kitchen serving area with two-by-two LED fixtures. And then in the cafeteria, we're proposing linear LED fixtures. This is a touch sheet of that fixture, it's very narrow, and it would incorporate it right into that suspended linear metal ceiling. And then this is the typical classroom LED lights that would go throughout the classroom area. So, we're continuing to work with our engineers to finalize their systems. We're meeting with them on Thursday, and we have a coordination with, meeting with them every week. And then we'll be up in the district next Tuesday to take a look at the interior finishes. So, the sound is a little funky on my end, but hopefully you can hear everything on yours. Any questions on any of the elements?
Anybody have any questions? Nope, I don't, I don't think we do have any questions.
Is that right?
No questions at this time.
Oh, okay.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate it, and we'll look forward.
All right, thank you.
We'll look forward to the next one.
Great. I'll stop sharing. Take care, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, is there, nobody questions? Do I have a consensus to receive and place this on file?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move along here to item B, discuss the Heart of the North Fall Sports and Spectators. Mr. Lucius?
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Sports are up and running. High school football, soccer, volleyball, we're into our second week. Girls golf, cross country, a couple more weeks beyond that. Middle school sports, which is cross-country football and volleyball, are also up into their second week. Been having a lot of Zoom meetings, trying to figure out what spectators are going to look like, what events are going to look like. I think we finally kind of have a handle on it. Been into the gyms, measuring, never thought in my life I'd have a six-foot pole walking on, around a gym and seeing how many people I can put in there on a six-foot pole, but that's what my life is these days, so. Doing that here in the high school, out on the stadium fields. And the Heart of the North kind of came up as a recommendation that we'll go with kind of like a 50-50 split for spectators. We want to try to get people out to be able to see games. Some may choose to be a little bit more rigid as far as they have got that opportunity, but kind of right now, what the consensus in the, in the conferences is that it would be a 50-50 split. The hard part is, is everybody's venues are different sizes, so that 50-50 split is always going to be different. So, what my life is going to consist of is getting event sheets out onto the district webpage, Facebook page, to my coaches, to get out to the parents, because basically, I'm going to have to be getting tickets to our athletes, whatever the 50% that we can, you know, send over to somebody else's gym. And in the meantime, also be telling another school, hey, this is how many you can bring into my gym. into my gym. So that'll be kind of the, the part of it that is kind of really, we're trying to get that all figured out of what it's going to look like. But yeah, everything will be an event sheet, trying to get that information out as soon as we can. Hopefully, like if it was a Friday night football game, we can get it to the opposing team on Monday. So you've got that week to work to try to get what your numbers are going to be and things like that. Social distancing, masks, people are talking about for tracing, contact tracing and things like that. We've already run a cross-country meet right up behind the school. Went well. Put a table out, five teams were there, five porta-potties, one for each team, which was something I never thought I'd see in my life either, but hey, here we go. And it seemed to go smooth. Everybody, you know, golf, cross-country are easy ones. Tomorrow, we're going to send our soccer team over to St. Croix Falls. Thursday, we'll have middle school football going to Ladysmith for a scrimmage. Volleyball will be in Chitec, so we're just kind of getting rolling. And we could do all this work. And next week, I may be coming back to tell you that, hey, we're not allowed to send any spectators anywhere. So that's kind of the fluidy of the moment and everything that goes like that. But right now, yes, we will have spectators here. We will have spectators traveling. It's just the amount is going to change event by event.
Okay, so can you tell me how you're going to track who is going to be able to go and who's not? Is that by the event sheet? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the event sheet, so let's say we're going into volleyball and it's in Barron and I've got 150 tickets. That's our half of the gym. I will now go to the volleyball coach and find out how many girls I have. We'll divide those tickets up, get them to those players. Those players then are responsible to get them out to the individuals, hopefully family members. But like I said, I can't stop Suzie from giving her boyfriend a ticket to go or something like that. So that's kind of how it would go. And then the tracing, like when you sign in, would be, and like I said, it could change event to event is going to change.
Okay, and what about here? How are you, you're, are you just counting how many are coming in or is that going to be the same?
It'll be the same.
Be the exact same thing?
It'll be the same thing. If I've got, I think we counted with socially distancing, it was 370 in our gym, so you take that half. We get half of that. I still give those tickets to my volleyball team. They give it out to the people. And then, yeah, in order to get, there, some, some are calling it like the Willy Wonka, the golden ticket. So if you present the golden ticket, you can then pay the admission fee to come in the gate. If you don't have the golden ticket, you can't get in.
So, okay, so you can't get in. So you'll be having somebody, so instead of here, I'm going to pay in and I can see the game, you have to have a ticket, then pay, and then you can enter?
Yeah. So in first conversations, most likely going to have two ticket takers, one for our own fans and one for the opposing fans to try to get people through. The other thing too is, you know, usually we open up the gyms and stuff an hour before games. That most likely isn't going to be the case. It's going to be about a half an hour before the events start. So hopefully we can get people in and out rather quickly, you know? And then it's just kind of being smart and doing the social distance and the coverings of the face and.
How are you doing football?
Hmm?
How are you doing football?
What do you mean, how am I doing football?
How many can we have out there?
How many can I have out there? Ah, what did we count up? I'm trying to remember, Dr. Assland, it's on the sheet. Because I've counted about three or four different things.
No, not.
Because you, because you, yeah, you kind of measure this way and that way. I'm trying to think, ours with socially distancing, with bringing in two extra bleachers, was it, were we just under 800? Can you, do you have that, Dr. Assland? I know 370 inside.
Then we're in fine.
Yeah. And, well, yeah, that's, that's going around the fence. We, every six feet around the fence, it's using the bleachers, it's pulling in two additional sets of bleachers. You know, people are being real creative in their counts and how they're, you know, Cumberland's got a side hill and they're six feet across, there's probably something so somebody can sit there so they, they can bring more people in. You know, outdoors is a little easier. It's hard to be real creative when you're, you're kind of stuck in the gym. Another safety precaution that we're all doing is, for volleyball, the first two rows will be taped off. Because we got to take, we don't want players diving and falling into the stands. Plus, teams come with very large numbers. Right now, we'll probably be staggering chairs with the teams to try to socially distance them when they're on the sidelines. So it's all the fun stuff.
550 for football. 370 for volleyball.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Because I was asked today.
Can you?
Because I was asked today.
Oh, I've been asked a lot.
I'm sure you've been asked a ton, so I'm just going to ask the question to make sure what I was told was true. You said that each school can make it worse than or better or whatever.
Well, we're trying not to go better, but more restrictive, because every county's different.
Right. So St. Croix Falls is not allowing anyone to go, correct?
Except they're limited, they're like immediate, like mother and father or stepfather.
They can go.
They can go.
Okay, so I was not told that.
Yeah, that's, that was the first, like I said, and I just got that today because we are going there for soccer.
Soccer tomorrow, yep. I was asked to ask the question. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the plan for middle school sports?
Middle school sports, usually the, the amount of people that are there aren't quite as large as what you have at your high school sports. With our gymnasium here in Spooner and with some of the other ones where usually middle school gyms are a little bit smaller, we only have the one side and we play on one court. So what we're going to do is basically for our home volleyball courts, it'll just be our parents or our immediate family. When we go outside for football, we've got more area, more range. We can open it up then to the opposing team to bring their parents in. And that is kind of the norm of what is going on in, in the Heart of the North, just because in its, the size of middle school gyms usually are not as big to host that many people. But they're, yep, they're playing. I mean, everybody's on a little bit of a, you know, downsized schedule, but we're trying our best to get kids out and get them playing and back to normalcy as much as we can.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody want to lock your own six-foot stick? By all means. Just come with me for a day.
It's like a fishing pole.
Come on!
Okay, do I have consensus to receive and place this on file?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item C is update from the district nurse. And there was a written update in your board docs. And I'm hoping that everybody got a chance to look that over. And if there, is there any questions or comments regarding that?
So this was as of the ninth. Do we have any updated information from today?
No, we do not. No, we do not. We'll be getting an update at our monthly call meetings, is that correct? Or as information?
You'll get, you'll get an update from district nurse Sarah Hamilton for each meeting.
Each call meeting.
Going forward. And I will include information in the weekly bulletin as well.
Okay. Do I have consensus to receive and place this on file?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And item D, moving on, discuss the line of credit. Mrs. Grindell?
Same as last year, you know, we have some cash flow issues starting in December, right before we get the taxes. So we're just looking to renew that line of credit with CCF Bank.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, do I have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting next week?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And item E, discuss live streaming board meetings on YouTube Live.
Okay, I'll start off with a little public service announcement here. We're live streaming tonight. However, Facebook Live is not working. I don't know why, but we are live streaming to the school website. There's been an update to the Facebook post to let people know that. The copy of the video will be out there to view after the meeting. That being said, as you know, we stream board meetings, a lot of other school events to our website, Facebook, and more recently, we've been experimenting with YouTube Live. We've used Facebook for quite a while now, but Facebook, unlike the other two sources I just mentioned, provides viewers what was considered an unmoderated platform to post comments, have discussions and that, which can be good or bad depending on how things are going. And with the need to do more live streaming now this year, especially for school events like athletics and that, we can do more with YouTube Live. YouTube Live provides the same benefits of viewing, but it does not provide that comment forum. So we're at a point here where the board could consider reevaluating where we stream board meetings in particular, because you have public commenting policies in place for that reason. We will be using YouTube Live just because we have to find ways to stream multiple events, something we can't do with Facebook or our school website at this time. So that's mainly what I'm just providing with you is some thoughts and observations and recommendation that this might be a good time to look at, moving our board meetings to just YouTube Live where people can gather that information of the meeting and be able to view it live or post-recorded. So if you got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Okay. Any questions, anyone?
With YouTube Live, would you be able to, would they be able to access that on our school website? Not, because some people don't do YouTube.
We'll have link, I mean, it'll be linked off school website. If you're a YouTuber, you know you can follow people's channels, so the district will have a channel to follow. And that'll kind of provide one-stop shopping for, at some point, we're going to run into an event where there's going to be something like a board meeting, an athletic event or something else going on. Instead of picking one over the other, we'll be able to set things up to say, you know, go here, pick the one you want to watch. And unfortunately, with the way things are going this year, I will not be surprised if we have to try and stream two sporting events at one time. Same thing goes for board meetings, concerts and whatever else.
Okay, so that gives us the advantage of being able to live stream multiple things at one time?
That's what we're working towards, as long as Mr. Lucius, I can find warm bodies to help us do that streaming. That is my goal, to put things in place, to provide that for all our home events without having to choose one over the other.
Now, if you subscribe to YouTube, there's no, there, you can comment on some of those or is that something shut off?
No, we can turn that feature off, so there would be no commenting on our videos that are posted for any of them.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Paul, are you able to hear everything that's going on this evening?
Yes, I'm hearing everything.
Okay, great. All right, so we're going to move on to item F, is the annual seclusion and restraint report. Mr. Hamm?
All right, this is an annual thing. Some of you know that annually, we're required to report this to the board by October 1st, I believe. There have been a few changes to the law. I did highlight some of those on the bottom of your report. Some of it will be in the reporting that we do, so we'll be collecting the data a little bit different. But since it went into effect last spring, the data that you have is pretty much the format that you've seen it before. Couple of things that I would say, you know, we can spin data a lot of different ways, but I guess if I look at a few positive things would be that, based on the numbers you're seeing there, it would indicate to me, looking at the number of regular ed versus special education students, that we've identified the kids that need the extra support and those kids are getting additional support. I think you also, if you look at it going from elementary to middle to high school, you see a decline in those numbers. So that would be an indication that some of those things are working and we're helping kids develop skills that they need to be successful. On a negative end of it, we were up a little bit from last year. And again, those numbers are something that we always want to see moving down, and we went up a little bit from last school year.
Is there any comments or questions for Mr. Hamm?
No, I think the, the trend of, I noticed that too, from elementary and it drops down. And I think that's probably normal of what you would see from some of those students.
Yeah. And I certainly hope what that does is means that we're getting that support to those kids and where those supports are starting to help and help kids acquire the skills that they need to be successful. So that I think was a positive that we saw in it. Last year, the data was a little bit different than that.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any other questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And do I have consensus to receive and place this on file?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So item G, we're going to discuss the update to the 2020-2021 school calendar. Dr. Assland?
If you look at that calendar that is included in board docs, you'll see in that first week, October, we have a professional development day on the Monday, the 5th October. You'll also see that we have a different start/end time the following day, and that was kind of a phase in of those, either late starts or early dismissals. Really the discussion from a couple of years ago where we're trying to get more professional development time. Now, we know based on our attendance level in the Rails Return Plan, at this point, Wednesday is a remote day, so it's a day for remote instruction. It's a day for heavy cleaning. It's also a day for professional learning. So what we, what we would ask you to consider at next week's regular meeting is a change to the school calendar so that Tuesday, October 6th is a full day. And we are just really working to maximize instructional time. That is just so critical.
Is there any discussion? Anybody have any comments or discussion? So what you're asking is that we use that half of, half of professional development to go to a full instruction day and remove that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to item H, discuss the sale of the airplane. Mrs. Grindell?
Exciting news. We have an offer, we have an outside offer from a community member to buy the airplane for $8,000. So that would mean the current aviation activity count, I believe, is in the hole about 3,300, so we'll clear that amount out. And then my proposal is that we leave the remainder in there for future use if something comes about and we do have the opportunity to do this again. But our recommend, administration's recommendation is that we do sell it, because at this time, we just haven't had any interest in any students working on it or anybody that's been able to take over that program.
Is there any discussion? Anyone have any comments?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
I, I know that when we get rid of unused items, there's a different ways of doing it. I don't know what the value is on this item. And my thought would be, would it be possible to put it on an open market, just determine what the value is before we accept something like this? There, there is some surplus websites that these can be listed statewide that is done for government vehicles constantly right now. My thought would be that's probably a better way to go on this. I know it's an unusual item, but just to simply take, because somebody made an offer without us really trying to sell it, I guess if I, I would say if you'd listed it on the statewide website, the surplus website, then it doesn't go. Well, then we can come back and readdress this, but I really wouldn't think that we should probably try to do another way before you just take the first offer that comes along. I'm just saying, this doesn't look good. I don't know what the value is. I'm just hoping, being honest with you guys, I don't know. It might be a good offer, I don't know.
I do have a comment on that. First of all, it's, was an unsolicited offer, so it is an individual who has a background in both in aircraft maintenance and is a pilot. This is a project aircraft. It is not error-worthy at this time. And I think if, if you were to take a look at what completed Zenith aircrafts, that's what this is, a Zenith aircraft, I think if you, you were to look at completed Zenith aircrafts that are error-worthy, you'd see for a project aircraft, this is a, this is a, certainly a fair offer. So we certainly could post it out as Mr. Johnson has recommended. I, I just think for the, the aircraft condition continues to degrade the longer it sits in that building. That is not an aircraft hangar and it's just not set to do that. And I think that if you looked at the Great Learning And I think that if you looked at the great learning that's occurred for students in Spooner really over the past decade or so, that, that it's just been a fantastic opportunity. We can't thank Mr. Barry Michelson enough for his leadership and his willingness to work closely with kids and the time and effort and energy that's gone into it. And I just would really encourage you to consider this fair and unsolicited offer and that we pass this aircraft on to someone who understands what they're getting into and can make good use of it.
Is there any other comments?
I was just wondering what stage of completion it's at.
Do we know that?
I, yeah, I can't speak to that directly. I know that it is, it's certainly not error-worthy. It hasn't passed the FFA inspection to go on. It, you know, it does have a, it looks like an aircraft, but it is not, it's not functional with the electric system and work on the engine. And I, Mr. Lucius may know.
It's still in the alternative school building. The paint is falling off of it more and more every time we come in. The wing is damaged. That has not been repaired yet. There was an electrical fire that was, I believe, last fall. The motor has been run, but it's to the phase where it needs to be taken out to, I believe, a, well, I'm not sure what has to be done, but I know where they were at was running the motor. The next phase was to take it to the airport and taxi it and get it up to speed to take off and then shut it back down, go around and get up. So as Dr. Haslam has stated, it's not in, it's not ready to be flown. And like I said, is, it is starting to definitely show its age. Let's just kind of put it that way. It's a nice way to do it.
And I, you know, if you'll recall, a year ago, the intent was to run the engine up and go through the taxi process as Mr. Lucius described and get that FAA certification and just the, you know, the level of, the volume of students that were interested in working on that just didn't let that happen. Then there was an electrical fire and an issue with the engine. So, you know, that, that process would be at, at some undetermined time in the future if we were to continue on.
Okay, is, go ahead, Mr. Scherz.
So, well, the other thing that I'd like you to consider is we're really trying to upgrade that building as much as we can for social distancing and the students we have. And right now, we're, the good news is we're getting a good group of students in there and that space really is needed soon we can get.
That was going to be my next question. Would you be able to utilize that space then if the airplane was not in there for some extra classrooms and?
Yeah.
Because I've only been in that building once, and to me, it seems a little bit.
There's a lot of stuff. It's getting better.
It's a little cluttered in there.
It's getting better.
It's, it doesn't look, you know, very inviting, just, just saying.
It's getting better.
Yep, okay, so, okay. Paul, I, you know, thank you very much for your comments and consideration. Everyone else, I guess at this time, I'm going to ask that we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting.
Yes.
Yes? Yes? Okay. All right. We are going to move on then to item I. We're going to discuss the revision to the community comments portion of the regular board meeting agenda, so.
As board members have experienced here in recent months, we continue to work on updating our policies and making sure that our practices and our policies are a match as it, as it should be. We have a situation that's kind of evolved over time where the community comments section of our committee of the whole meetings, our regular board meetings, and what our board policy states reflect three different time standards for community members to make comments during those meetings. So we're just kind of at that phase of policy revision where we know that we need to bring our practices and our policies into line. So, you know, I, I would, I would put this out for consideration. I know at one point, the district had a practice of three minutes per person to make their, their comments. And that, that would be what we, we put forward for your consideration as we look to bring, again, our policies and practices into line with each other.
And I think, you know, to put this in perspective, when you're looking at three minutes to either plead your case or talk about something that, you know, is, you know, very important to a person, I think three minutes is a pretty long time to, to explain your case and to give your idea or comment to the board for consideration. So I certainly am in agreement with the three minutes per person. That would be written in the policy, correct? And that would go for also the Cal meeting as well as the regular board meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I was here in the day when three minutes wasn't enough. And it's not broke. I would rather see us keep it as it is. It gives us a healthy, it gives the community that room where we don't restrict them, we haven't had to use it. And it gives them the opportunity, if we have a, a subject of discussion that's intense, it gives the public an opportunity to take up that half hour maximum because we do limit it. We have not had to use it, and I don't think we've even, even been close. But the minute you start to restrict that, it wasn't that long ago when it was a big deal. And I would like to keep our, the, the community with us on community comments. I think if we start changing that, I think we provoke some of the things that happened in the past. And that concerns me. And so I would like to keep that because we want to welcome those comments. It doesn't happen very often, but I want to welcome that. And I know since we've opened it up, people have been respectful. We've had to stop a couple of people and say, hey, just because they don't, they're not used to this forum or how to do it right. But almost everybody, even when it's been intense, have respected those rules and redirected themselves. And that's why, just with our history, I would like to keep it the same, maybe line it up so it's the same for all of them. That doesn't matter to me, but I'd like to keep it open because of our history and what we've experienced, and it wasn't that long ago. So that's my comments.
Okay, so you're asking that we, we not limit it to three minutes, but we can still align the policies to have the 45 minutes, which is what is the max for our public comments?
I, I would propose that we don't limit people. If there's a lineup, what we've done is we've divided that up with the amount of people so that the max is 45 minutes.
Yep.
And, and I think that's just good because we want to welcome the public to come in. Sometimes it's not so fun, I know, but it's good for them to have that opportunity. And the moment you start feeling restricted, I, I think we could be asking for some undue conversations and frustrations. That's, that's how I, that's how I look at it, just because it wasn't that long ago.
Okay.
And I'd like to make sure people feel free to come to these meetings and voice their concerns and not be feeling limited. Because there was a time when two minutes, three minutes, people were getting cut off, and they don't forget that stuff. And it wasn't enough for some of those people to get their point across.
Okay.
That's how I feel about it.
Mr. Hamm?
Can I just share an observation?
Sure.
One of my things is I believe that the intent is for people to be able to share their opinions and get up and be able to share things with the board. A suggestion that I would offer for you to entertain would be that once a person gets up, if they don't get to keep getting back up, because I think sometimes it turns into arguing a point rather than it does sharing a point. Just a thought.
So there's some language, as, as you said, that is contradicting the different pieces.
Yes, yes.
And there's also language about that, too, that you get your chance to speak but cannot speak to that and redirect. Same position again. So we would need to come up with a policy that addresses all of that.
That addresses all of that, yes, correct.
And I would be okay with that because conversations move, and when people feel like they vet out what they're trying to say, if we still have the time, unless it's a case where they're going outside the, the bounds of respect or language, which then we, we would put the kibosh on it and work on that, I would try to make it so people have the opportunity as long as it stays within the bounds. Because whenever you have a conversation and you want to say your point, and then somebody else comes to point, and then if there's a response, whatever, just if we have the time, let's give the time to the public as long as they're keeping within the means. That's what I would propose. I know it sometimes makes it sticky. I know it's sometimes, sometimes a rabbit trail, but at least people feel like they can have, that's their time. So I would propose that we keep it to that, even though it does, like Mr. Hamm says, it does, it can, but I, I feel like people need to be able, especially up north here, that people need to be able to voice their, voice that. And sometimes it isn't all pretty because people have never been to a meeting like this. And, and it's part of their learning process, too.
Michelle?
And my thing is, is we want to take away the Facebook part where they make comments, which I agree with because there's no one answering them. And we're asking them to come here to voice their opinions instead of on.
Social media?
Social media. So we should give them the opportunity to do that.
Either way, it's written, there's some restriction, though. So the current one says that it's divided up based upon the number of individuals. So if we had 45 individuals here, we're limiting them to one minute. At least if we do the previous community comments, they're at least getting three minutes. Potentially, some people wouldn't get to speak if there were 45 people lined up. But either way, there's some restriction just for conducting a meeting. And I, I do want to hear from the community. I think we give ample opportunity at Cal meetings where there's a little more discussion that can happen. I think either way, there's just controlling a meeting, some restriction involved.
Well, I think in the time when we went over that time, what we did was, depending on how, where that meeting was, we would extend that time if that was needed. Because we had a whole auditorium that was packed full, and it was a lot of people very concerned. And I know once they, once some of that began to be restricted, we almost had all hell break loose. And I'd rather not see that. Forty-five minutes puts it at 45 minutes. If we don't feel like people, if we feel like there's been some people that haven't been heard, you, we have the opportunity to extend that, but we don't have to. And so that's why I'd rather, because I, I know, I know some people, and I don't remember if I was one of those people trying to say what I felt in three minutes. And it's, it seems like a long time on paper, but it's not very long.
And I don't, and I guess I don't think that the reason for this policy change is to restrict people. I think it is to align the policy, and that is the biggest thing.
And I understand that. I just want to take into consideration, it wasn't that long ago, and people remember that stuff as if it was yesterday. And so that's why I would like to keep it a little bit more free in that regards, just because I feel like it would be healthy for us to keep it that way.
So I, you know, I do just want to reiterate, whatever you decide as a board is, is okay. That, that's fine. It's been identified that your policy is not in line with what your practices are. Whatever the board as a assembled group decides for this is, again, is fine. The policy just needs to be revised to reflect that.
Reflect it, yep. Okay.
Can I say something here?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
I, I have, I think that we should bring this up at our, at the next meeting, our meeting, just to get everything on the same page. We need to clean this up. But I'm going to throw something else out there, because I'm, I'm looking at the policy right now. This is policy 0167.3, correct?
Yes.
It shows that it was last revised April 6th of 2020. Am I looking at the right one? And the only thing I'm bringing up here is that if we're going to revise this policy and look and clean things up, I'm going to look at it and say that there's an item in here, it's item A, and it says, "Public participation shall be permitted as indicated on the order of business." And I would also ask that that be struck and taken out, simply because sometimes with cell phones and everything in the world going on, if some person from the public wishes to come in front of the board and spend their two minutes or three minutes, whatever we decide on, on whatever topic detail is important for us to hear, we should be receptive and allow that person to speak as long as they find in and indicate what they wish to speak about. Because I'm thinking that when you restrict the speaking down to order of business, we might have somebody step up and say, I'd like to address something that you did at the last meeting. You did something a month ago that I'd like to discuss. Or I give you my opinion. We're not here to discuss, we're here to hear their opinion. But my thought would be is to, let's not restrict them to the order of business, meaning the agenda that we're working off of. So a person might come in and say, in the future, if you discuss this, this would be my views. So that was just the only other thing is whatever we decide is fine, but if we're going to clean up, I would ask that that be struck out of this policy. Thank you.
In our current practice, we have the community comment portion of the meeting. Is that specifically limited to item, agenda items? I'm trying to remember what the wording is on.
At the community of the whole, it's you can speak to the item that is being considered at the time. Community comments for the regular board meeting is a concern or comment on, it's not necessarily.
It's like an open forum.
An item on the agenda, it's an open forum. So, so maybe, maybe what we do with this information at this point is if each one of you would go through this policy and read again and maybe jot down your ideas and maybe get them to Caitlin, to Caitlin in a timely manner so that she has time to, you know, compose some of the comments and put together something for us to look again at it at the regular board meeting on Monday, then we can discuss it again. And, you know, not necessarily do we need to do something right away, but if we could get it to align within a, within a good amount of time, just so that we have everybody's opinion on it versus going back and forth this evening to try to figure that out. But if there's a particular comment or thing that you want to say, I would encourage you to get that information to Caitlin so that she can put that stuff together. Okay, so do I have a consensus to do that?
Yeah, so just kind of the, the timeline then would be that you'd be prepared to have a first reading in October and then a second reading in November, so.
Okay, is that?
Yep.
Do we have a consensus to that? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, everyone? Okay, great, thank you very much. And we're going to move on to item J, which is the 30, 60, 90-day planning cycle. And of course, you have seen that all on your board docs. And if anyone has any questions regarding that, we should just receive and place on file, please. Do you have a consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're going to move on to item K, which is the financial update. Mrs. Grindell?
In the board packets, July's financial information was given. So we started out the month with approximately 1.9 in the checking account. We took in a little over $100,000 in receipts, and we paid out about 1.3 million in expenditures, including two payrolls totaling right around $400,000 and vouchers of about a million, leaving the cash balance at about $663,000 for the month of July. On another note, we will be wrapping up the audit this week as we have reports due to the state by Friday. No significant changes from where we predicted the year to end. No significant changes from where we predicted the year to end, so I'm happy about that. I don't have an exact number at this time, but we will have a, a number by October's committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, great. Is there any comments or questions for Mrs. Grindell? Okay, then I'd like to be able to have a consensus to receive and place that on file.
Yes.
Okay. And we're moving to item L, approval of the vouchers. Is there any questions regarding the vouchers, or any concerns, or anything? Okay, then I would like to have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I'm just going to make a comment here before we make a motion to adjourn. There is very little time between this committee of the whole meeting and our regular board meeting next Monday night, so I encourage the board, if there is any questions about anything we had discussed here tonight, to make sure you do your due diligence to get those items answered, those questions answered, so that you are prepared at next Monday's meeting, okay? Is there any comment about that, or anything? Anyone? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.